Ug iuwanan, wag pagsaling sa tahitan san. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, ipa inanga ikaw sa kabanong. Nagawaas nun, nubuan, gihahalukan, kayao ng tanan. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, kay ang tanan sa imumusunod. Humau kanino, gipatik bago, lupas panong, lupas panong, lupas. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, ipa inanga ikaw sa kabanong. Nagawaas nun, nubuan, gihahalukan, kayao ng tanan. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, kay ang tanan sa imumusunod. Humau kanino, gipatik bago, lupas panong, lupas panong, lupas. Pagsubang saadlang, ang kanino sa mata. Ang nakasaksi sa pagungpaglaon. Iandam ang kawaliho para mabuhay, umatuman. Ang pangandoy naghihandong sa kanunan. Igamitan ogusog taaktik.
Una, pamina lagi. Torns, ikaw, Kantorns ah? The fourth regular session is now called order. Please all rise for our invocation to be led by the Honorable J.S. Alvarez. To be followed by the singing of our national anthem, our Bukidnon My Home, and the municipal hymn. Followed by the recitation of the Vice Mayor's Creed and the PCL Creed.
Let's put ourselves in the holy presence of God. And for the Catholics, let us make the sign of the cross. Dear Lord above, we come to you to start this day in all we do. We thank you for the gift of life, for peace and love. May this day be bright. Lord, help us know the wrong from right and lead us with your guiding light. Guide our thoughts, its word we say, so we can serve with heart today. Ourself as ones... Ourself as ones, not cloud or mind, but teach us, Lord, to be more kind. Let justice flow, let truth be seen in all we do, our intentions clean. So bless our work, our hands, our plan. Remind us why this task began. To serve with honor, not for fame, but for the greater good, in your holy name. Amen. In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magilin, helas na si ganan. Alam ng puso, sanitik po'y buhay. Upang dinirang, uyan na ng magiting. Sa manlulupi, kita pasisi diw. Sanagadang kutok sa si boyan, salabi kawagaw. Ayinadang tulakawin sa pantayang minamahar. Ang isdak ng kawatay, kuyatun, ayan atininig. Ang pituin na tarong ya paynan, ang may divatitinig. Luwag na paraw ng war, habik pa'nsingka, uyan habik sa bibigbo. Ang inigaya na partay ng habik, ang pamatay ng gahil sa loo.
Wherever I may go, the distant land to see. I long to go back soon to sweet Bukidnon home. Where lovely mountains high, with forests of grand. Bring memories to me, the home I long to see. The broad and great lattes, the river winding through. My heart no love no more, on hundreds of the world. They'll love me gently, the peace the travelers brought. Will glow and ever glow. Wherever I may go, the silver waterfalls. In distance what can see, in beauty they express. The stranger sings her praise, the long and seeks a close. The canyon steep and wide will ever be shine. It all will give the night. There my heart lives to be. In far away, the green of land. Others blue, starry skies. Where love and joy never die. There my heart lives to be. In far away, the green of land. Others blue, starry skies. Where love and joy never die.
Isan kayo na, kalagot uli ang. Tinita Bukidnon, tanakapadman. Ungtutan matangka, talasagang kumal. Patatakaw ka, patungkay matawak. Pastuha, happy niya. Alakan na, tauya ko. La ni di, bigla ang kungka. Ikaw na wa, nalaypatan. Siya na, ura na, palalayak na, tauya ko.
Sisukun na ang kahayon sa sitaka. Matita ang kanina uka bulanan. Galagaya na malay ginuko ban. Manuko iya kanin kanalan. Manolo Portiz sa asu kadungganan. Ang kinatas, ang iyo kira uksan. Nakinbizok sa kanan buhan. Ang iyang alapanyo kawahan, nagsaysaysay ang kadunahan. Natusap, managi uza, manare scot sa blengka kawahan. Ni papi papa, unak makiblati, sa tibo oka katilingan. Mina hal na manolo Portiz, matahum na humlungsug na gipigan. Kadunay na humpasitunran, hugan dumun sa kahankuran. Mina hal na manolo Portiz, matahum na humlungsug na gipigan. Kadunay na humpasitunran, hugan dumun sa kahankuran.
I'm the Vice Mayor and my confidence with my people. Should devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislature. That with integrity and statemanship, I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me conjugate myself for the people I'm called to serve. For the PCL Creed?
I am considered mandated by the law to enact measures and ordinances that we doubt is to be able to carry out. In the pursuit of happiness, peace, and prosperity, I believe in public service above self as the driving principle of my official acts. As I tread the pathways of local legislation, I will maintain my mind and heart, and I shall be true to my principles.
Please be seated for the roll call, Madam Secretariat.
Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Jr.
Present.
Honorable Miguel Didi Mata.
Present.
Honorable J.S. Alvarez. Honorable Rina Idroti Kinio. Honorable Elsa Ber A. Dagunlay, on official business. Honorable Plora Mede Pinaso. Honorable Joy Lavi Soares Cordovess.
Present.
Honorable Rachel Abales Bayakag.
Present.
Honorable Kristi Liparto Salabi, still on official business. Honorable Alex Di Payanga. Honorable Mary Jane Pigilayan, on official business. Honorable Princess J.B. Padin. There are nine members present, Honorable Chair.
Nine members present, Coramissere, by declare. Our majority floor leader is the Honorable Rachel Abales Bayakag.
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Good morning.
Good morning, fellow councilors and our secretariat. After the reviews, I move for the approval of the Order of Business as it was already sent to us in advance.
So there's a motion for the approval of the Order of Business for today's session. Any second? Comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
For the reading and... For the oral reading of the minutes of the previous session dated July 17, I move for the dispensation since the copy was already been sent to us in advance.
So there's a motion for the dispensation of the oral reading of the minutes of the third regular session held last July 17, 2025. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval and adaptation of the July 17 minutes of regular session.
So there's a motion for the adoption and approval of the minutes of the third regular session held last July 17. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments, corrections? There being none? Seven minutes?
Okay, one correction in the statement of the Honorable Payanga during the previous session. Supposedly it was 25 million, but it was stated 50 million, the for the NHA. So instead of 50 million, it's only 25 million.
May we know what line, Mr. Chair? Mr. Presiding Officer? Or page? It's just somewhere out there.
Page and line.
Page nine.
Memorize na ko na, pero dito na po. Hindi committee report.
Committee report. Nevertheless, Mr. Chair, we have no objection, Mr. Chair.
In line 534.
534.
It was stated 50 instead of 25. 25 million. Saktu, Honorable Payanga?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Five?
Five, three, four. Instead of 50, it's only 25.
Yes, I also remember that figure, Mr. Chair, five.
Okay, any further comments, corrections? So there being none, the motion is now approved and the minutes of the third regular session is now adopted.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the suspension of the internal rules to accommodate our visitors.
Before that, may we acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Liparto. And there's a motion to dispense the internal rules or suspend the internal rules and procedures to accommodate our very important visitor coming from the capital of the province of Bukidnon. No other than the Honorable Ligaspi.
Yes. Mr. Chair, may be given the honor and privilege to introduce...
Okay, go ahead.
The NPA, the Niwang Pero Aptik of the... The City Council of Malay Balay, Mr. Chair, the capital of the province, the Honorable Alan Ryan O. Ligaspi.
Salamat kay si gayon sa kumakaubanan nga mga konsihal nga nannerbisyo diri sa atong pinalangga nga munisipyo sa Manolo Portitz. Ayong buntag sa tuwang tanan.
Ayong buntag.
Ah, kabalo ko, ako'y pinakolehing na naganhidiri nga magpapili, usap, isip presidenti sa kalihukan sa Philippine Councilors League. Nadirikaron si'nyong mga kamot, ang ordinan sa nga gusto na ko ipapasa. Kahit tanaw na ko, kani siya maoy makapagaan sa atong trabaho, isip mambabalaod diri sa atong pinalangga nga probinsya. Akong tanawon, atong tanawon, kinanglan siya at least 3 million para sa operating systems. 3 million. So kung atong budget sa tuwang munisipyo, labinasa oban nga mga munisipyo nga narat 200 million, 300 million, dako kay siya ok mapaksi. Pero kung kani nga budget kwaon gikan sa probinsya, niya kondili manggaling makaya sa atong probinsya, kwaon gikan sa atong Senator Mig Subiri, dako keni ikatabang sa tuwang SP Secretariat. Kahit kabalo ko, damgo sa tanan SP Secretariat nga madigitalize ang ilahang opisina. Unsa ang advantages ni Ani. Ganiha, ta't ta't na ko nga wala naghawidong newspaper. Pagabot ako diri kay sa human ko, na'ny newspaper sinatobangan, nawiran ako ang mindanao news. Kitaan ako dito ang inyong environmental code. Misaludo ko, kay guapo kayo nga ordinan sa. Kani siya, kung mapakoyanap sa Tibook Bukidnon, at least may uniform ang environmental code, dako keni tabang sa atong probinsya. Pero tungut kay ang oban nga mga munisipyo walay access sa inyong system, dilin-dili na mabalanan nga kani ding ordinan sa nanas inyoha, sayang ang higa yun. Atong dumdomon isip pinili nga mga konsihal sa tuwang lugar. Ang pinakauna na atong atarba ho mauman na pagpanday ang mga balao polisiya, resolusyonis nga maoy makatabang sa pagsaka o paglambok sa atong lugar. Imagino nimo, kung ang Manolo digitalize, gikan sa first endorsement, committee meeting, second reading, third reading, pagpasa sa sanggunyang panalawigan, imorang i-click, matrace na rin nimo ug asana. Three to four months, ayak ma-approve ang atong ordinan sa wa't akabalo kinsa ang komiting na naghawid sa sanggunyang panalawigan. Pinaagian ang digitalization, i-click na nimo, may balanan nimo kung naka-komity meeting na ba o wala. Niya kung magconduct manggaling sila komity meeting, kita mismo maka-acto dito para ato masuportaan ato ma-explain ang atong ordinan sa. Then kung imong boton na unaon, kung tanan munisipyo at ang doha kasudat sa Bukidnon, susama ang sistema, tanan ipasa sa sanggunyang panalawigan. Kung dunay kinanglanon ordinan sa ang Manolo Portitz, nga wa't eh takabalo, existing na di ay sa libuna. Keyword ra nimo ang isulot sa computer, makita na day nimo uy, nanada ordinan sa ang libuna Ani. Pwede rana ko i-copy paste, ihaom, himoon nga balao sa atong kawalingon nga lugar. So grabe siyang advantage mugaan yud ang trabaho sa konsihal nga maoy pinaka, maoy tumong na to nga nong napapili, ta isip tingok sa katauhan diri sa atong hawanan sa kutsiho. Unsa ak mapasali, kung inyuning ihatag sa kuwa tabangan ko ninyo nga makapot keni nga paninguha, isa ra yud, isa. Isa ang ak mapatuman ni Ani. Hatagan tamog LR, Legislative Register, maassign si'nyong SP Secretariat, siya ang mag-manage Ani nga computer para kani mas makapadali upa nerbisyo sa inyo. Then kung na maikinang lanon sa kuwa, sa iyan na ninyo diretso i-sulti, at least dali lamu abot sa kuwa. Kana siya nga sweldo, magagikan sa akong budget, isip representante or tingok sa mga konsihal, dya dito sawanan sa sanggunyang panalawigan. Isana siya sa akong gusto ipatuman, kung inyo kung tabangan nga makapot, ang akong tumong paninguha nga may mahimong ulo ok tingok ninyo sawanan sa sanggunyang panalawigan. Ika doha. Ang PCL Academy, nakadumdompa man Ani siguro si Konsihal Di Mata. Sayang kay ni, kinawala na ni Agi nga termino. Kani siya dugang kaalam mahatag sa atong mga konsihal, maka graduate o college kung wala pa, maka graduate o masteral ok wala pa, maka graduate o doctoral kung wala pa. Ang kaalam dako ok tabang sa tua para mas epektibo ato pagpanerbisyo, isip tingok sa katauhan sawanan sa kutsiho. Ikatolo, kani memorize gapo ni sa mga karaan apod ng mga konsihal. Labinaw ang konvensyon tua sa Manila, bulag-bulag ang hotel. Kung nakaki kinanglanon, moabot ok to nga sa adlaw, ayak pakamatuan sa PCL stop tungut sa traffic, kay lagyo kayo. Pero kakakitaan ako in the last three years, ang Bukidnon may pinakadaghanan of delegates. Permanent na straight, 200 at least ang gapel. So why not make use of it as a leverage wherein pwede na tua niuon ang nasional nga kumahimo isarata ka hotel. Kay ni Ani pamaagi, kung na ay kinanglanon ang mga konsihal sa atong mga stops sa PCL, dali rakaayo makaserybisyo ang akong mga stop kung inyo kung tabangan. No? Then at the same time, kasagaran magkonvensyon, isa raman ang site dayon kung asa mo magseminar. Kung asa mo nga hotel, dito na ang seminar. Advantage po kung usarata ka location, kay kita dito, pagabot sa seminar paper, kita na magbayluay. Kay mas nailan manato atong mga silingan, unsa ang ilang panganhanglan. So mas advantageous siya ikatolo, kung bisitaon tas atong mga kadaguan, sama sa atong kongresman, sa atong Senator Mig Subiri, dali rakaayo kay natapok namatadaan. Tololang nisha sa pipila sa akong mga agenda nga gusto ipatuman dya sawanan sa kutsiho. Kay ngano, ang atong pinakarol isip nga nong gitukod di PCL, why lain kundili mau ang pagplastar kaparamas masayon ang trabaho sa konsihal, samtang siya naga-serybisyo sa iyan konstituents. Tabangi kunini, nga pangapantalao kay katong mga karaan, nga kalihukan, ako'tong ipadayon, kay kuantanaw na ko nga ngayon pa siya para sa kayuan sa atong tanan. Nanakipang improve, kay gusto na ko nga mapakoyanap, matilawan po sa Manolo Portitz, ang serbisyo sa Niwang Pero Aptik na manoy sa Malay Balay. Ako'y ipaila ulo, ilapag kausap, ako si Alan Ryan O. Ligaspi. Mas nailan nga manoy Ligaspi sa Malay Balay. Minyo kadoha, sama orang bayhana, kay sibil man ok simbahan, no? Doha ang anak na gi angkon, kay wala manggi sa ilain, no? Kung magusto mo, ako rana ipasa ang ako ang personal profile kung kinahanglan. Pero katong mga nakaila, kabalo na yud, nga tinuod yud nga Niwang Pero Aptik si manoy sa Malay Balay. Sa ika dohan ako nga termino, sukad nga nakadao ko, hangtod karoon, perfect pa kong atin nan sa tanan sesyon sa moang hawanan sa kutsiho. Ako po't ang kinadaghanan ok napasa nga ordinan sa pipila ni ini una sa Tibook Pilipinas. Kani nga panerbisyo, akong gusto ipakoyanap, walay pagduaduha maskin way nagsubo sa kuwa o nagpaluyo, kay gusto na ko ni mapatuman kay kung kani masugdan karoon, ang umaabot pa nga mga konsihal sa Bukidnon, sila apil nga makapaimulus sa susama nga akong mga pantantao. Sa kausap, malipayon kay ning Niwang Pero Aptik na manoy sa Malay Balay. Si gayon nga ihatag karong buntaga, ok tana, ok tana, ako ampo inyo kung obanan sa akong damgo nga makapanerbisyo sa atong pinalangga nga probinsya sa Bukidnon. Ayong buntag, ok dalaygo na diyos.
Atay kulbahay. Masignay mga pangutana nga atong mga konsihalis, sayang di kung magabutar, pero kung ako ana, lip and red, akong butar ano eh.
Ah, baloko, na niso likod si'nyong una una, maulol ang mga pangutana. Kung naiila, napoy ako, kung piraiila, abayan ako. Oh, para mapatas lang ang labanan, at least mas maconsider ninyo ang akong tumong o pantantao nga makaayog yud sa atong mga konsihal diri sa atong probinsya. Morato, salamat kay si gayon, pasensya, kinanglan ako balik sa Malay Balay. Kaya ako karoon membro sa atong Peace and Order Committee ongoing among PAP'S Plan for 2026 to 2028. Yagaya, hatagan ang ina ko si gayon, ang oras nga makasturya sa inyo, yawa na lang, ngayon kung masuportahan sa akong damgo sa pagpanerbisyo sa Bukidnon. Salamat kayo sa kausap, umayong buntag sa tua.
Pwede mo pa picture sa iyo, um... Honorable Ligaspi?
Sa permiro nga picture libre, pa ika dohan na ni Bayan.
Um, kanino, gipatik bago, lupas panong, lupas panong, lupas. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, ipa inanga ikaw sa kabanong. Nagawaas nun, nubuan, gihahalukan, kayao ng tanan. Lupas lupas, lupas lupasog, kay ang tanan sa imumusunod. Humau kanino, gipatik bago.
Okay, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the resumption of the session.
Okay, let's proceed.
Let's proceed to the reference of business. For first reading, item one, proposed resolution number 2025-088 BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled Resolution Expressing Profound Commendation and Recognition to Ms. Raisa Victoria Pearl Dumutan for her outstanding academic achievement in graduating magna cum laude with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Development Studies from the University of the Philippines, Manila, class of 2025, authored by the Honorable Cristile Parto Salabe and co-authored by the Honorable Miguel Di Di Mata. I move to transfer to the business of the day, item one A.
Transfer to item one A.
Item two, proposed resolution number 2025-088 BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled Resolution Commending Ms. Bernadette El Baston for her exemplary performance and recognition as a startup Phase Two National nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge Program of the Department of Agriculture authored by the Honorable Raquel Abalas Bayakag, co-authored by the Honorable Elsa B. Idagunlay and the Honorable Princess CJ B. Padin. I move to transfer to item one B.
Transfer to item one B.
Item three, proposed resolution number 2025-090 BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled Resolution Urging All Barangay Local Government Units of Manolo Forte, Bukidnon to Establish Barangay Economic Enterprise to Generate Revenue and Provide Essential Services to their Constituents, authored by the Honorable Rena Ikinyo and co-authored by the Honorable Raquel A. Bayakag. I move to transfer to item one C.
Transfer to item one C.
Item four, proposed resolution number 2025-091 BP of the Sangguni Ang Bayan entitled Resolution Earnestly Requesting Honorable Roelio Neil P. Roque, Provincial Governor of Bukidnon to Allocate Two Sets of Tents Intended for Use by the PNP Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, authored by the Honorable Rena Ikinyo. I move to transfer to item one D.
Transfer to item one D.
Next item is Barangay Ordnance Number 2025-002 of Barangay Santoninho entitled Requiring All Households of Barangay Santoninho, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon to Engage Backyard Gardening to Empower Health Sustainability in the Community. I move to refer to the Committee on Health, Sanitation and Nutrition, Committee on Law, Rules and Regulation, and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the Committee on Health, Sanitation, Nutrition, Law, Rules and Regulations in Barangay Affairs.
Item six, Resolution Number 43C of 2025 of Barangay Mambatangan entitled A Resolution Authorizing the Demolition of Old Barangay Hall for the Construction of New One-Unit Two-Story Multi-Purpose Administrative Building Amounting to 10 Million Pesos. I move to refer to the Committee in Infrastructure and the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
Refer to the Committee on Infrastructure and Barangay Affairs.
Item seven, Resolution Number 2025-030 of Barangay Alae entitled A Resolution Requesting the Honorable Roelio N. Kinyo Municipal Mayor to Release the Municipal Aid to Barangay Alae and the Amount of 1 Million Pesos Intended for the Lot Purchase of Barangay Alae, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. I move to transfer to item one E.
Transfer to item one E.
For the communication, item one is a letter of July 18, 2025, signed by City Mayor. This is to formally request the Sangguni Ang Bayan of this municipality for the Approval of Realignment, Amounting to 55,000 pesos only, from various portions of appropriations to be made available as an additional appropriation of various, for various of the said office and programs. Please see attached documents for your reference. And attached to this is a certification from the local finance committee for the availability of funds. I move to transfer to item one F.
Transfer to item one F.
Item two is a letter of July 18, 2025, signed by the Mr. Roy Lover A. Azares, the Acting Municipal Budget Officer. Submitting her read is a copy of Sangguni Ang Kabataan Annual Budget, calendar year 2025 of the following barangay, barangays and its technical review for your review and appropriate action, Barangay Dalirik, Barangay Dahilayan, and Barangay Santiago. Please acknowledge receipt. I move to transfer to item one G.
Transfer to item one G.
Item three is a letter of July 22, 2025 from the Office of the Municipal Mayor, respectfully endorsing to the Sangguni Ang Bayan the attached memorandum of agreement by and between the local government of Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, represented herein by its municipal mayor Roelio N. Kinyo, referred to as the municipality of Manolo Forte and the PH Global Jet Express Incorporated, with addressed at Maraho Tower, Second Street Corner, Fourth Avenue, Fort Bonifacio, 1630 Tagig City, represented herein by its sales and marketing manager, Mr. Ramfel Tundag, referred to as the service provider. Please be informed that this Mowa serves as a renewal of a previously executed agreement which has already expired. The renewed agreement aims to continue the engagement with PH Global Jet Express Incorporated under the same terms and conditions previously agreed upon. Relative to this, the undersigned is respectfully requesting the August body to authorize the undersigned to enter into the same, anticipating with thanks for your consideration and urgent appropriate action on this matter. Very truly yours, Roelio N. Kinyo Municipal Mayor. I move to transfer this to item one H.
Transfer to item one H.
Item four is a letter of July 22, 2025, signed by the municipal mayor. The undersigned is requesting through a resolution the concurrence of the appointment for department head position in the local government unit of Manolo Forte. The personnel specified below has passed the evaluation and has met the basic qualification standards set by the Civil Service Commission to with Attorney R. C. A. Hamila for as municipal government department head, one municipal legal officer for the municipal legal office, and Joey Cesar M. Gaite, municipal government department head, one as municipal administrator to the municipal administrators office. The undersigned is also requesting that this request be treated with urgency to allow the LGU to comply in the submission of the appointment of the aforementioned within the prescriptive period set by law. We have attached for this purpose copy of the appointment. Kindly coordinate with our human resource officer for clarification and/or further questions. Your support is very important in achieving our agency's strategic goals and objectives. I move to transfer to item one I.
Transfer to item one I.
Item five for the communication is a letter of July 23, 2025, signed by the municipal mayor, respectfully endorsing to this August body the attached memorandum of agreement by and between the municipal government of Manolo Forte, represented by municipal mayor Roelio N. Kinyo, referred to as Bukidnon Manolo Forte Consulta Provider and the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Manolo Forte, represented by Governor Honorable Roelio Neil P. Roque, referred to as the FIRL Facility on the Implementation of Field Health Consulta Package. Relative to this, we would like to respectfully request for a resolution authorizing the undersigned to enter into the said Mowa, anticipating with thanks for your consideration and urgent appropriate action on this matter. Very truly yours, signed Roelio N. Kinyo Municipal Mayor. I move to transfer this to item one J.
Transfer to item one J.
Item six is a letter of June 9, 2025, which from the Office of the Human Resources Management Office, but signed by the Honorable Roelio N. Kinyo, respectfully requesting the Sangguni Ang Bayan their concurrence through a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor Roelio N. Kinyo to sign the memorandum of agreement for partnership of Central Mindanao University and the local government unit of Manolo Forte for an on-the-job training program. Attached her read is a copy of the memorandum of agreement for your perusal, urgent for appropriate action. I move to transfer this to item one K.
Transfer to item one K.
Item seven is a letter of July 16, 2025, signed by the municipal mayor, respectfully endorsing to the Sangguni Ang Bayan a copy of attached tripartite memorandum of agreement by and between the Department of Agriculture Regional Field Office Ten, Antonio Lona Street, Cagayan de Oro City, represented by its regional executive director Jose Apollo Y. Pakamalan, referred to as the DARFO Ten, and the local government of Manolo Forte, represented by Mayor Roelio N. Kinyo, referred to as MLGU, and the Mantibugaw Agrarian Reform Beneficiaries Farmers Cooperative, represented by president or chairperson Binhamin Magtahas Jr., referred to as proponent on the project component of one four-wheel drive farm tractor to the Mantibugaw Agrarian Reform Beneficiaries Farmers Cooperative, Mantibugaw, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon, in the amount of 2,900,000 pesos, mayor. Greetings of good health and public service in line with the implementation of the Field Health Consulta Package under the Universal Healthcare Program. The Bukidnon Manolo Forte Consulta Provider has been actively providing primary care services to our constituents. As part of the claims reimbursement process, field health requires the designation of valid unauthorized bank accounts where consulta claims shall be deposited. In this regard, we respectfully request for the endorsement to the Sangguni Ang Bayan a resolution authorizing the use of our existing land bank accounts for all checks of the Bukidnon Manolo Forte Consulta Provider to be deposited in the following accounts namely: one, Land Bank PCB1HC I3532-0046-90 for healthcare institution share; two, Land Bank PCBPF35320039-454 professional fee sharing share. These accounts are already enrolled with field help for our, for other benefit packages and we seek to include their use for consulta package claims to ensure seamless and efficient fund disbursement. We further request that the resolution include the allocation of consulta package claims, 50% for the healthcare institution and 50% for the professional fee of all healthcare providers involved in the delivery of services. We hope for your favorable response and endorsement through an appropriate resolution. Rest assured, all transactions related to these, to these accounts will be properly accounted for and reported. Thank you for your continued support in advancing the health services in our municipality. Respectfully yours, signed Joanna Marie B. Duñez M.D., Municipal Health Officer. I move to transfer this to item one M.
Transfer to item one M.
The next item is MFRTA memorandum endorsing the application for franchise to operate a tricab. One, Jose G. Gaybe, Obson for, ah Jaime, sorry. Jose Jaime, Obson for Diklo Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. Renato O. Onahon, Obson Five Lingion, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. Francisco B. Bosho, Oburok Ten, Damilag, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. And Pablo Birano from Zone Four Diklo, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. For information, signed Justado D. Incentio MFRTA OIC. I move to transfer this to item one N.
Transfer to item one N.
Item ten is the application for accreditation of the Manolo Forte Transport Service Cooperative or MAFOR Transco. I move to transfer to item one O.
Transfer to item one O.
Item eleven is a letter of July 16, 2025 from Barangay Damilag, specifically from the Office of the Punong Barangay. This is addressed to the Honorable Vice Mayor Ronaldo Budgeon Elbagayas Jr. for the Sangguni Ang Bayan, Manolo Forte, Bukidnon. Greetings of Christ peace. The Saint Jude de Dios PPC President, Mr. Cesar Catley attended the Sangguni Ang Barangay Regular Session last July 14, 2024. Mr. Catley communicated the concern of the parish on the proposed renovation or improvement that will traverse the Barangay Road or the flyover. The parish had purchased a property across the present structure and they plan to undertake the, undertake renovations that will necessitate crossing the Barangay Road to connect the new structure of the existing church. In line with the said matter, the concerned church is asking for the legality of the plan and/or, and/or if this is permissible and will not violate the Barangay Road clearing operation. We hope this merits your favor. Thank you very much and more power. Respectfully yours, signed Alan I. Kahoy, di Punong Barangay. I move to refer this to the Committee on Infrastructure and Committee on Barangay Affairs.
And Law, Rules and Regulations.
The last item is a letter from the Grand Manolo Forte Arena Incorporated of July 7, July 24, 2025. Greetings from GMFA Incorporated family. May we have, may we have request in your good office the approval of the event schedule indicated next to the event name for the month of August 2025. Hoping for your kind approval, sincerely signed Albert Gamolo Cockpit Manager Grant MF Arena Incorporated. I move to transfer to item one P.
Transfer to item one P.
Uh, we move to the committee reports. May I recognize the Committee on Rules and Regulation, Honorable Kristy L. Salapi?
Honorable Salapi?
Good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer. Good morning, fellow counselors and to everyone who is here in the session hall. This is a committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-seven-B. Uh, the committee of the whole to which was referred. Uh, subject, resolution number thirty-one, series of twenty-two-five Barangay Mambatangan, entitled a resolution requesting the esteemed Sangguni Ang Bayan members of Manolo Fortiche through Vice Mayor Honorable Ronaldo El Bagayas Junior to conduct a joint session between the barangay council of Mambatangan and Alae to discuss and identify the boundaries of both barangays. On attendance was Honorable Erasmus Cesar Ramirez, Punong Barangay of Alae. Based on the discussion to Sangguni Ang hereby notes that the above-subject resolution stated that Barangay Mambatangan has recently undertaken a thorough examination of the maps provided by the Municipal Planning and Development Office and has found out that there is a concerning claim of Barangay Alae asserting ownership over an area rightfully owned by Barangay Mambatangan. Through the review of the provincial map, the validity of Mambatangan's ownership stands clearly confirmed that the absence of clear demarcation has caused the confusion among residents and has posed challenges in administrative management, land use planning, and provision of public services. With that, it has come to the attention of both barangay councils of Mambatangan and Alae that need to clarify, verify, and officially determine the boundaries separating the two barangays. That the deed of donation and the land title from the donor, Mr. Pataling Hoog years back stated Mambatangan and not Alae. That Honorable Ramirez, Punong Barangay of Alae, said that they will- they are well aware that the land situated in Alae is within Mambatangan area. However, he emphasized that all major improvements, facilities, uh, daycare center, park center, and voters are all from Barangay Alae. In pursuit of clarity and service to their constituents, Barangay Alae is open and willing to attend the request of a joint session with Barangay Mambatangan, and they are willing to delve into a deliberation of the area of jurisdiction. The following recommendation were then considered to conduct a joint session involving the barangay councils of Mambatangan and Alae and the Sangguni Ang Bayan in the second week of August, two thousand twenty-five to discuss and identify the boundaries of both barangays. To invite the Municipal Planning and Development Office to present the boundaries of both barangays during the joint session. Final recommendation, the resolution number thirty-one, series of twenty-two-five of Barangay Mambatangan, entitled a resolution requesting the esteemed Sangguni Ang Bayan members of Manolo Fortiche through Vice Mayor Honorable Ronaldo Bagayas Junior to conduct a joint session between barangay council of Mambatangan and Alae to discuss and identify the boundaries of both barangays. We hereby acknowledge and tailored to a joint session meeting this second week of August, twenty-twenty-five, attested by all committee members present, Presiding Officer. So with this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-seven-B with regards to the request of Barangay Mambatangan to conduct a joint session between barangay councils of Batangan and Alae to discuss and identify the boundaries of both barangays. Any second? Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The Honorable Elbaresi?
Comment, Mr. Chair. Uh, in case of joint session, it should be the two barangays conducting the session. So our participation will just be observers. Uh, marag sila hangang magset. So we'll just assist and facilitate, Mr. Chair. Ang ipagay na to maago atong sekretariat. Uh, ilasya nga kuwan trabaho. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Elbaresi. Any more comments? There being no more comments, the motion is now approved.
For the next committee report, Mr. Presiding Officer, shall I continue?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-eight-B uh, to the committee of the whole, which was referred, letter of April fifteen, signed by municipal mayor endorsing a resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-two of the Local Investment and Incentive Board, entitled a resolution proposing amendments to section three, eighteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-three of ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, otherwise known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four for appropriate actions of the Sanggunian. Honorable Kristy, yours truly presented the subject matter discussing further amendments was Ms. Lorraine Rickington, Local Investment Incentive Board Officer and Secretariat of the Board, transpired were as follows. That the Local Investment and Incentive Board seeks to address the resolved unidentified concerns in Municipal Ordinance Number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, and upon seeing gray areas of the ordinance, hence amendments were found necessary. That the Local Investment and Incentive Board has resolved to propose amendments to the approved ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, also known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four, as follows. On section three, definition of terms from A to D, the amended section three now has E to G added. Letter E, local raw materials refers to the materials used in the processing of products must be produced by the local farmers from Manolo Fortiche excluding the natural resources. Letter F, income tax holiday refers to exemption from local business tax and shall only be availed one time by the registered enterprise. Letter G, capitalization shall refer to the total project costs, which includes land, building machinery, equipment, and working capital except where it pertains to a barangay micro enterprise, in which case that the same shall exclusive of the cost of the land and provided that in case of corporation, corporations, capitalization shall refer to its paid-up capital. On section eighteen, the former incentives were made by the Board of Investment involving support to micro, small, medium, and medium-sized enterprise and was then amended in the incentives by the main local investment incentives board only focusing on the support to micro, small-sized enterprises, removing the medium enterprises since it will covered in section twenty-one. On section twenty-one, fiscal incentive for medium and large enterprise, the amendment was more detailed and specific in terms of criteria for fiscal incentives. On section twenty-three, corporate social responsibility on registered enterprise, the enterprise category, small, medium, large, was indicated in the former section twenty-three of ordinance twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six was expanded to provide lists of enterprises choose from their CSR contribution. That the twenty percent of the enterprise income tax holiday shall be allotted to the CSRs as listed in section twenty-three that shall then be contributed to the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche. That if medium-large enterprise cannot qualify for the three-years option, the amended section twenty-one fiscal incentive for medium-large enterprise, the enterprise shall avail as CSR. Then Honorable Elsieber Dagunlay inquired about the consequences if enterprises unwilling to contribute to CSR, to which Ms. Rickinton answered that the enterprise cannot avail the one-year income tax holiday. The criteria is set on the amended section twenty-one is applicable on the enterprise's second year and stipulated in their undertaking. That the CSR shall, shall do, shall be done during the or- their operation in the municipality for at least two years and not before. That it was clarified to Honorable J. Elbaresi that the CSR list is exclusive to new businesses, not to the old and existing businesses. However, expansions of the same line of businesses are allowed as long as the enterprise is new. That when an enterprise choose CSR contributions from the list and stated in the amended section twenty-three, it will be subjected to the Local Investment and Incentives Board, Board's approval. That if an enterprise contributes to a CSR that can already cover the whole six years during their fiscal incentive, such as an infrastructure, classroom building, et cetera, the enterprise is allowed to contribute once. The contributions can be done directly to their second year or their fifth year. If they wish to do so, otherwise, an enterprise whose contribution is not that grant is set to contribute yearly starting on the enterprise's second year. That the Local Investment Board shall convene to approve on when an enterprise can start execution of their chosen CSR. In the cases of bankruptcy and the other unprecedented events affecting the enterprise, a discussion shall be done between the L I B and the enterprise. During making the CSR not absolute but subject to L I B's approval. Such approval is to be done to lessen the redundancy and increase community reach. That the following recommendations were then considered to pluralize items in section twenty-three. Honorable J. Elbaresi suggested the following. To omit the line provided that in the case of corporations, capitalization shall refer to its paid-up capital in section three. Capitalization is to cater to the actual investment, not just a paid-up capital because paid-up capital is just paper and it does not actually warrant an entry money into the municipality. To replace BMBE with micro and small, to not burden the barangays with strict provisions. To remove twenty in the title to read a resolution proposing amendments to section three, eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-three of ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, otherwise known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four. Since it has been decided by the Local Investment and Incentive Board the Sangguni Ang Bayan that to no longer transfer the contents of the item, instead just amend, as needed in the context of section eighteen. As such, the section eighteen support to micro, small, medium-sized enterprises and was moved to section twenty and shall be disregarded. Final recommendation, on motion of yours truly, the resolution number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-two of the Local Investment and Incentive Board, entitled a resolution proposing amendments to section three, eighteen, and twenty, and twenty-one, and twenty-three of ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, otherwise known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four, to read as a resolution proposing amendments to section three, eighteen, twenty-one, and twenty-three, ordinance number twenty-two-four-twenty-dash-dash-nine-twenty-ninety-six, otherwise known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four, was approved as amended at the committee level. So it is all attested by the committee members present, Mr. Presiding Officer. With this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-eight-B with regards to the proposed amendments to section three, eighteen, twenty, and twen- twenty-one, and twenty-three, ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-twenty-ninety-six, otherwise known as the Manolo Fortiche Investment Code of twenty-two-four. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
For another committee reports, Mr. Presiding Officer, uh, joint committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine-B. The Joint Committee on the Laws, Rules, and Regulation, Committee on Barangay Affairs, Committee on Environmental Protection and Ecology, to which was referred. Subject, ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine of Barangay Agusan Canyon, entitled an ordinance regulating the littering, dumping, and throwing of garbage, rubbish, or any kind of waste in public and private places of Barangay Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Uh, Honorable Kristy Liparto Salapi, Committee Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulation, presented the findings and reviews of the subject ordinance. That the barangay primary goal of enacting the subject ordinance is to enhance the ecological balance in the community through sustainable and integrated waste management. The committee found that the subject ordinance is in order and it is within the authority of the barangay to pass. Final recommendation, on motion of yours truly and unanimously seconded by all of the members present to ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine of Barangay Agusan Canyon, entitled an ordinance regulating the littering, dumping, and throwing of garbage, rubbish, for any kind of waste in public, private places. Of Barangay Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, was approved at the committee level. It is attested by the committee members present, Mr. Presiding Officers, for all the committees. With this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the joint committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-nine-B with regards to the ordinance regulating the littering, dumping, and throwing of garbage, rubbish, or any kind of waste in public and private places of Barangay Agusan Canyon, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
May I proceed with another report?
Okay, go ahead.
Joint Committee Report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-one-zero-five, uh, zero, zero-one-zero-B. Uh, the Joint Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, Committee on Barangay Affairs, and Committee on Youth Development, to was referred. Subject, ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-zero-five of Barangay Agusan Canyon, entitled an ordinance regulating stores to sell cigarettes and intoxicating drinks to minors. Yours truly, the Committee Chairs on Laws, Rules, and Regulations presented the findings and review of the subject ordinance. That the subject ordinance aims to safeguard the barangays children from buying cigarettes and intoxicating beverages in accordance with the law and not exposing them to harmful effects on the same, of the same. That the committee found that the subject ordinance is in order and it is within the authority of barangay to pass. Final recommendation, and the motion of yours truly and unanimously approved, seconded by all the members present, the ordinance number twenty-two-four-dash-zero-zero-five of Barangay Agusan Canyon, entitled an ordinance regulating stores to sell cigarettes and intoxicating drinks to minors, was approved at the committee level, attested by the committee members present and to of the, of the three committees, joint committee hearing, Mr. Presiding Officer. So with this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the joint committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-one-zero-B regarding the barangay ordinance regulating stores to sell cigarettes and intoxicating drinks to minors of Barangay Agusan Canyon. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Uh, may I proceed, Mr. Presiding Officer? Joint Committee Report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-one-one-B. The Joint Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulation, and Committee on Barangay Affairs, and Committee on Education, to which was referred. Subject, barangay ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-one of Barangay Lindaban, entitled an ordinance promoting quality and sustainable education for all constituents of barangay Lindaban, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, and for other purposes. Honorable yours truly, Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulations, presented the findings and review of the subject ordinance. That the subject ordinance aims to institute that education for all, to all school-aged children, and to actively engage parents in ensuring that enrollment and regular attendance of their children in educational institutions. The committee found that the subject ordinance is in order and within the authority of the barangay to pass. However, the committee recommended to conduct a public hearing before implementation. Final recommendation, on motion of yours truly and unanimously seconded by all the members present, the ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-one of barangay Lindaban, entitled an ordinance promoting quality and sustainable education for all constituents of barangay Lindaban, Manolo Fortiche Bukidnon, and for other purposes, was approved at the committee level, subject to public hearing, attested by the committee members present. So with this, Mr. Chair, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the joint committee report number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-eleven-B with regards to barangay ordinance number twenty-two-five-dash-zero-zero-one of barangay Lindaban. An ordinance promoting quality ordinance. ordinance... promoting quality and sustainable education for all constituents of barangay Lindaban, Manolo Fortis Bukit Nun, and for other purposes. Any second? Any comments? Discussion? There being none, the motion is approved.
May I proceed to another committee report?
Okay, go ahead.
Joint Committee Report Number Twenty-two-five dash zero-one-two-B, a joint committee on laws, rules, and regulations and committee on barangay affairs to which was referred. Subject, ordinance number zero-one, series of twenty-two-four of barangay Sangkanan entitled "An Ordinance Amending the Date of Anlautas Sangkanan from the twentieth day of April to the August twenty and every year after". Honorable Kristi Liparto, Committee Chairman on Laws, Rules, and Regulations presented the findings and review of the subject ordinance. The barangay Sangkanan Council of Elders passed Resolution Number Zero-one dash twenty-two-four, asking the barangay council to amend the celebration of anlautas sangkanan every twentieth of April to August twenty every year. The said amendment was based on a certain legal basis in the nineteen-oh-seven history, after that establishment of the American Civil Government and as in pursuant to Act Number sixteen-ninety-three passed by the Philippine Commission in August twenty nineteen-oh-seven. The committee found that the subject ordinance in order and it's within the authority of the barangay to pass. Final recommendation on on motion of the, of yours truly and unanimously seconded by all the members present, the ordinance number zero-one, series of twenty-two-four of barangay Sangkanan entitled "An Ordinance Amending the Date of Anlautas Sangkanan from twentieth day of April to August twenty every year after", was approved at the committee level. Attested by the committee members present. So with this, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of joint committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-twelve-B in regards to the ordinance number one, series of twenty-two-four of barangay Sangkanan. An ordinance amending the date of anlautas sangkanan from the twentieth day of April to the twentieth, to August twenty and every year after. Any second? Seconded, any comments?
Comment, Mr. Chair?
The honorable Alvarez.
Just a brief comment, Mr. Chair, kay we will be facing, uh, other resolutions or ordinance from, um, the other barangays. Actually, atong nung di-checkning Act sixteen-ninety-three, di-basa ginini Councilor Dugonlay. Di-basa, uh, it does not mention barangay Sangkanan, Mr. Chair. So wala'y di-mention nga mga barangay. However, because of semblance of historical basis, uh, dunay mga other documents mentioning Sangkanan as barangay. Murag, okay, rani i-approve. Kaysa katung mga request nga, ibalhin lang due to convenience.
But would you want to, uh, omit the sixteen-ninety-three? Uh, just to... Um, di-lisya confusing ba? If sixteen-ninety-three doesn't mention barangay Sangkanan, so... Ato na lang, might as well recommend to the barangay not to mention it.
Yes, uh, murag, yes, oh, nagi, napoy point, eh, uh, kami siding, uh, presiding, Mr. Presiding Officer. Pero murag, okay rapod siguro, just basis nga, pag atong na-approve ang Act number sixteen-ninety-three, uh, na-anay mga, uh, nag-function nga mga barangays.
And that includes Sangkanan?
Possibly, Mr. Chair, uh, possibly. So na, na, na napoy mga, uh, kaning, tawag ni, um... documents, uh, dated before nineteen-seven, nineteen-oh-seven, nga, na-mention ang Sangkanan.
As a barangay.
Ah, as a municipality. As a settlement, Mr. Chair. Settlement, gitsa, ang tawag sa ilah.
In that case, barangay Sangkanan is older than our municipality.
Yes, definitely, Mr. Chair. Pero if you, if you, uh, naamam po'y, uh, Tangkulan, na'y, uh, Sangkanan. Uh, so, uh, to, to think of, uh, Manolo Fortis as existing before nineteen-oh-seven, medyo lisod siya. Kaya the same label pa, halos ang Maluko, Tangkulan, Sangkanan, they are of the same level pa. Uh, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, kaning hierarchy sa political structure, momao pa sila. And it was only during kaning nineteen-seventeen, uh, nga, na-elevate ang status ani nila. Ang isa ang na-elevate, which is Maluko. Na-elevate na siya, higher than Tangkulan, higher than Sangkanan. So naunag gitsa, Mr. Chair. Ibin Tangkulan, nauna siya sa municipality.
So what are you suggesting, Honorable Alvarez?
Oh, ju-just, uh, keep the wordings of the, uh, committee report, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, I just want to comment, uh, next time, if there are, uh, resolutions from the barangay, okay neng inani nga na'y masight nga legal basis.
Okay.
Oo. Kaysa ibalhin lag, kanunggan bito. Because, uh, ganahan sila, uh, weekdays or, uh, weekends, or, uh, sinandan. Oh, okay na, okay na ni siya, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Alvarez. The Honorable Payanga.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, actually, this is part of the history, no, of the barangay Sangkaling, Sangkanan. That is why the barangay council elders, no, of our IP community in that, uh, particular, uh, particular barangay is, um, marasilang nakuratan. It's because kalit lang na-usap ang katung, um, previous nga, anlaut. But, uh, the council of elders, uh, he give us an information relative to this. That is why naghihun sila nga, pidi ba na mapabalik? Kay mo mani ilang nandan before?
Ang, angun sa, ang August twenty?
Oo, mo na ilang nandan before, mo to nga, ningon sila nga, muba, ibalik nila ang ilang celebration. Nung ko, uh, tanawa to niyong, inyong business, business. That is why he... Kwan kibali, ni, kwan ni, brought up nila dinisatong sangunian. Para nga, kay, mo, mo may ako advise sila, no? So with this, uh, presentation, Mr. Chairman, I think this is the basis nga no nga, ikuwan nila sa anlauta Sangkanan. Ang August thirty.
Twenty.
Ah, twenty, twenty, Mr. Chair.
Hapit na. Okay, thank you, thank you, Honorable Payanga. Any more comments? So there being no more comments, the joint committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-two-B is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Liparto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for, uh, another committee report, uh, I move to recognize, uh... uh, Honorable Rena Kineo, uh, for the Committee of Tourism for the proposed ordinance institutionalizing the Manolo Fortis experience.
Honorable Kineo.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, our fellow, uh, twenty-first Sangguyang Bayan members. Uh, this is a joint committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-three-B, Committee on Tourism Development, Committee on Laws, Rules, and Regulations. This is the Joint Committee on Tourism and Development and Committee on Laws and Rules and Regulations, to which was referred to the subject as the proposed ordinance of the Sangguyang Bayan entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalisating the Manolo Fortis Experience", a sustainable tourism program promoting indigenous culture and ecological preservation, providing funds, and for other purposes. Autored by Honorable Rena Ikinio and co-autored by Honorable Alex D. Payanga. Uh, the Honorable yours truly, Committee Chair on Tourism and Development, presented the subject ordinance with the invited resource person from the municipal tourism office, Mr. Jixen Floyd Abanes. Cilian points transpired was as follows: The ordinance seek to institutionalize the Manolo Fortis experience, a sustainable community-based tourism initiative promoting indigenous culture, environmental preservation, and inclusive economic growth. A technical working group will be established to design, implement, and monitor the program. Integration into municipal development plans and alignment uh, with RA nine-five-nine-three Tourism Act of two thousand and nine and RA eight-three-seven-one Indigenous Peoples' Rights Act is mandated. An identified establishment expressed, uh, interest in offering incentives, example meals, discounts, and revenue shares to tour operators to encourage participations. The program has been operational for two years and has gained recognition from the DOT and international visitors. As reported, this municipality has already won accredited community guide. The following recommendations were then considered: To state a clear definition of what constitutes the Manolo Fortis experience, including components like ecotours, cultural immersions, and homestays. To use official position instead and omit personal names in the TWG composition as the ordinance is permanent. To formulate a separate ordinance for the, uh, incentive program to allow the detailed guidelines and broader application beyond the Manolo Fortis experience. To include a provision for capacity building adding to the technical working, working group function, uh, develop and implement programs for local tourism stakeholders including IPs, guides, and municipality workers. To incorporate a clear timeline or mechanism for M and D reporting quarterly or annually within the monitoring and evaluation framework. Inclusion of social protection benefits, field health SSS assistance for frontliners. To include the Philippine National Police in the technical working group. For our final recommendation on motion of the Honorable Rena Ikinio, Julie seconded by the members present, the proposed ordinance of the Sangguyang Bayan entitled "An Ordinance Institutionalisating the Manolo Fortis Experience", a sustainable tourism program promoting indigenous culture and ecological preservation, providing funds and for other purposes, was approved at the committee level, subject to additions and corrections. This is attested by the committee members present, Committee on Tourism and Development. Uh, Mr. Uh, Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-three-B.
So there's a motion for the approval of joint committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-three-B in regards to the ordinance institutionalizing the Manolo Fortis experience, a sustainable tourism program promoting indigenous culture and ecological preservation, providing funds, and for other purposes. Any second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Uh, Mr. Pres-uh, Presiding Officer, uh, can I proceed? For the committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-four-B, is the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations to which was referred the subject of the Sang, uh, SK annual budget of barangay Kalugmanan for calendar year twenty-two-five. Presenting the subject budget was the Honorable Rena Ikinio, Committee Chairman, that the total SK annual budget of the barangay Kalugmanan for calendar year twenty-two-five is amounting to six hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred twenty pesos and eighty centavos. That the committee found the submitted budget in order, noting that the subject budget underwent technical review of the local finance committee, providing its findings and recommendations for reference. For the final recommendation on motion of yours truly and unanimously seconded by the members present, the review of the SK annual budget of barangay Kalugmanan for calendar year twenty-two-five was approved at the committee level. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-one-four-B.
There's a motion for the approval of the committee report number twenty-two-five dash zero-fourteen-B in regards to SK annual budget of barangay Kalugmanan for calendar year twenty-two-five. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we may now, uh, proceed to the calendar bis- of business. For item A one, uh, I move to, uh, recognize Honorable Alex Payanga for planning and land use for the renewal of quarry application.
The Honorable Payanga?
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Good morning to all members of this august body.
Morning.
This, uh, presentation, Mr. Uh, Presiding Officer, is relative to the renewal of quarry application for the commercial sand and gravel project of Mr. Elyseu G. Unahon located at, uh, sitio Sabangan, barangay Dalirig, Manolo Fortis Bukit Nun. This, uh, presentation, Mr. Chair, I handed, uh, already the documents, pertinent documents from the DNR and Ju-Science Bureau and the certificate of compliance certificate. And also, Mr. Chairman, we inspected this uh, area with the committee, no? Committee on Environment and of course, uh, Committee on Land Use. And, uh, we observed, Mr. Chairman, that this, uh, uh, quarry is, uh, within the zone... so, uh, within the zonal area of a quarry, quarry, Mr. Chairman. So with this, Mr. Chairman, uh, since that this, uh, uh, since that, uh, Mr. Elyseu Nahon is submitted to this august body, uh, complete document. So I move, Mr. Chairman, for the approval of this, uh, renewal of quarry application of Mr. Uh, Elyseu Unahon Junior, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion for the approval of the renewal of quarry application for sand, for commercial sand and gravel project of Mr. Elyseu J. Unahon, situated in sitio Sabangan, barangay Dalirig, Manolo Fortis Bukit Nun. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the, uh, business of the day, for second reading, a proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two twenty-nine, I move to recognize our author, Honorable Miguel D. Dimata.
Honorable Dimata?
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash two-two-two-nine was already presented and discussed during the twentieth regular session for first reading and approved and adopted during the twenty-first, uh, regular session. So with this, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash two-two-nine entitled "An Ordinance Regulating Establishment, Operation, and Maintenance of the Funeral Parlors in the Municipality of Manolo Fortis on Second Reading", so moving for its approval, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash two-two-two-nine of the Sangguyang Bayan, an ordinance regulating the establishment, operation, and maintenance of funeral parlors in the municipality of Manolo Fortis Bukit Nun. Any second?
Second.
Seconded, any comments? There being none, the motion is now approved in second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dimata.
For number two and number three, a proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two thirty and, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twenty-two thirty-one, uh, I move to recognize the author, uh, Honorable Joy El Cordoves.
The Honorable Joy El Cordoves, DMD?
Thank you, Honorable... Thank you, Honorable Raquel Abales. And good morning, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Morning.
This proposed ordinance, ordinance number 2025-2230, "An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Provision of Nutritious Meals and Snacks in All Activities Organized by the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche", this proposed ordinance was sorely discussed and presented during our committee hearing with our resource person from the Municipal Nutrition Action Office, Ms. Ricky May Lozero. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this ordinance, "An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Provision of Nutritious Meals and Snacks in All Activities Organized by the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche", on second reading.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed ordinance number 2025-2230 on second reading, "The Ordinance Institutionalizing the Provision of Nutritious Meals and Snacks in All Activities Organized by the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche", any second?
Second.
Any objections? Mr. Chair, just a clarification on the lechon was the...
Yes, yes, Mr. Ak. We can still serve lechon.
Actually, it was incorporated in the committee hearing
Yes, Your Honor.
and being highlighted in all caps that it's allowed. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glad to hear that, Mr. Chair. Any comments? There being none, the motion is now approved.
For committee report, I don't know, committee report for second reading, the proposed ordinance number 2025-2231, "An Ordinance Enhancing the Registration, Accreditation, and Support System for Barangay Health Workers in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche and for Other Purposes", authored by yours truly and co-authored by Honorable Mary Jane P. Gilayan. This proposed ordinance was sorely discussed during our committee hearing and with our resource person from Municipal Health Office, Ms. Kathy Tilap, we approved the ordinance at the committee level along with the corresponding committee report. We also had the opportunity, Your Honor, to present this to our punong barangays during their monthly meeting under the leadership of the Honorable Jane Gilayan, the President of the Liga and the co-author of this proposed ordinance. The presentation during that, Your Honor, was led by our head, our head research, the head of our research team, Mr. Darius Palizores. It went smoothly, however, there were a few recommended amendments, particularly section... Particularly on the qualification of the Barangay Health Workers, the BHW, to include the requirement of being a bona fide resident of the barangay. Section nine, letter B. And then additionally, some concerns were raised regarding who will shoulder the expenses for the trainings of BHWs, especially in the light of the limited funds of the, our barangays. We clarified that under Republic Act 7883, it is the responsibility of the local government unit in partnership with the Department of Health to provide for the trainings, continuous education of the BHW. It is already incorporated, Your Honor, in section four, letter C.
Okay.
Okay. With that, Mr. Presiding Officer, I respectfully move for the approval of this proposed ordinance on second reading.
In our order, it was being copy paste, but the proposed ordinance number 2025 is supposed to be the, this one, as presented. So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed ordinance number 2025-2231 on second reading, "The Ordinance Enhancing the Registration, Accreditation, and Support System for Barangay Health Workers in the Municipality of Manolo Fortiche and for Other Purposes", any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Cordobes.
Mr. Presiding Officer?
Can we have a very, very short break?
Okay.
A thirty-second break?
Okay, Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred items, item 1A, I move to recognize Honorable Kristy Liparto Salabe.
Honorable Salabe?
For... For item 1A, it is a proposed resolution number 2025-088B-P of the Sangguyang Bayan entitled, "Resolution Expressing Profound Commendation and Recognition to Ms. Riza Victoria Pearl Dumutan for her outstanding academic achievement in graduating as magna cum laude with Bachelor of Arts Degree in Development Studies from the University of the Philippines, Class of 2025", whereas, I... Mr. Presiding Officer, I may allow to read the verses.
Okay, go ahead.
So whereas the local government unit of Manolo Fortiche recognizes the importance of academic excellence as a pillar of personal development and community progress, whereas Ms. Riza Victoria Pearl Dumutan, a resident of Barangay Sangkanan, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, successfully completed her Bachelor of Arts Degree in Development Studies as part of the Class of 2025 at the University of the Philippines, Manila, graduating magna cum laude and receiving the Best Thesis Award, an achievement that reflects her exceptional dedication, intelligence, and perseverance. Whereas Ms. Riza Victoria Pearl Dumutan's success served as an inspiration, a role model for youth of Manolo Fortiche, providing that determination and hard work can lead to academic excellence. Whereas Ms. Riza Victoria Pearl Dumutan has brought pride and honor for her family, barangay, and the municipality through her exemplary academic performance, which also contributes positively to the reputation of Manolo Fortiche as a municipality that nurtures and values education and reinforces its commitment to supporting youth and development and academic excellence. So on motion unanimously second, so with this, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 2025-088B-P.
There's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution expressing profound commendation and recognition to Ms. Riza Victoria Pearl Dumutan for her outstanding academic achievement and graduating magna cum laude with a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Development Studies from the University of the Philippines, Manila, Class of 2025. Any second?
Second.
Any comments? There being none, the motion is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Liparto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item 1B, I move to recognize our SK Federation President, Honorable Princess CJ Padin, to sponsor a resolution commending young youth in agriculture.
The Honorable Padin?
Good morning, everyone. This is our proposed resolution number 2025-089B, a resolution commending Ms. Bernadette El Baston for her exemplary performance and recognition as a startup Phase II national nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge Program of the Department of Agriculture, authored by Honorable Raquel A. Bayakag and co-authored by Honorable Elsevir A. Dagunlay and yours truly. Whereas the Young Farmers Challenge, or YFC, program, is a competitive financial grant initiative of the Department of Agriculture designed to encourage youth participation in agriculture, agribusiness, and agri entrepreneurship by providing startup capital, mentorship, and technical assistance essential for launching and sustaining innovative agri-based enterprises and to empower young Filipinos to become key contributors to sustainable rural development and national food security by transforming bold ideas in agriculture and fisheries into viable income generating ventures. Whereas Ms. Bernadette El Baston distinguished herself as both a startup provincial awardee and a startup regional awardee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge, demonstrating outstanding entrepreneurial acumen and innovation in the field of agribusiness. Whereas on July 17, 2025, the Department of Agriculture, through its Agribusiness and Marketing Assistance Service, or AMAS, held a momentous event recognizing the achievements and contributions of exemplary young individuals and youth organization in the field of agriculture by conferring honors during the 2024 Young Farmers Challenge National Awarding Ceremony held at the Baguio Convention Center in Baguio City. Whereas Ms. Bernadette El Baston's business enterprise, Excellent Harvest, was recognized for its potential and innovation, earning her a place as a startup Phase II national nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge. Whereas her achievements bring honor not only to herself and her family, but also to the municipality of Manolo Fortiche, serving as an inspiration to fellow youth and reinforcing the vital role of young entrepreneurs in transforming the agricultural landscape. Now therefore, on motion unanimously seconded, be it resolved as it is hereby resolved by the 21st Sangguyang Bayan of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, to commend Ms. Bernadette El Baston for her exemplary performance and recognition as a startup Phase II national nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge Program of the Department of Agriculture. Resolve further that a copy of this resolution be furnished to Ms. Bernadette El Baston as an expression of the municipality's deepest appreciation and as a testament to her inspiring contributions to agriculture and youth empowerment. Resolve finally that a copy of this resolution be likewise furnished to the municipal mayor, Roelio Enquinyo, for his information and reference. With that, Mr. Chair, with that, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move to approve the resolution commending Ms. Bernadette El Baston for her exemplary performance and recognition as a startup Phase II national nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge Program of the Department of Agriculture.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution commending Ms. Bernadette El Baston for her exemplary performance and recognition as a startup Phase II national nominee in the fiscal year 2024 Young Farmers Challenge Program of the Department of Agriculture. Any second? Any comments? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Padin.
For transferred item 1C and 1D, I move to recognize Honorable Rena Ikinyo, the author of this proposed resolution number 2025-090B and the proposed resolution number 2025-091B.
The Honorable Ikinyo?
For transferred item 1D, this is a proposed resolution number 2025-091B-P, a resolution earnestly requesting... Oh, 1D, 1C una?
1C.
I'm sorry. Okay, for transferred item 1C, a proposed ordinance number 2025-090B-P, a resolution urging all barangay local government units of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, to establish barangay economic enterprise, BEEs, to generate revenue and provide essential services to their constituents, authored by yours truly and co-authored by Honorable Raquel Abales. Whereas Section 3 of Local Government Code of 1991, RA 7160, affirms the policy of the state to promote local autonomy by empowering local government units to become self-reliant communities and effective partners in national development. Whereas the same code grants LGUs, including barangays, the authority to establish and manage economic enterprises that can generate income and deliver essential services subject to applicable laws and guidelines. Whereas barangay economic enterprises, BEEs, aim to provide essential services, stimulate local economic development, and generate revenue to supplement the barangays' annual budget. Whereas the creation of BEEs encourages financial sustainability by allowing barangays to cover operational costs through self-generated income, reducing dependency on internal revenue allotments and other external funding sources. Whereas BEEs can encompass a wide range of income-generating activities, including but not limited to managing barangay-operated public markets, operating transportation services, engaging in agricultural agro-processing ventures, and producing or selling goods and services. Whereas these enterprises contribute significantly to job creation, economic growth, and improvement of public services within the barangay, thereby uplifting the standard of living of the residents. Whereas barangays are in the best position to identify and respond to local economic opportunities that suit the needs and capacities of their respective communities. Now therefore, be it resolved, as it hereby resolved in session assembled, a resolution urging all barangay local government units of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, to establish barangay economic enterprises to generate revenue and provide essential services to their constituents. Resolve further that a copies of this resolution be furnished to the Municipal Planning and Development Office, MPDO, LEDipo, and Municipal Cooperative and Development Office for the assistance and implementation of barangay economic enterprise. That copies of this resolution be furnished to all 22 barangays in the municipality of their information and immediate action. Resolve finally that a copies of this resolution be furnished to the 22 barangays, chairperson and municipality of Manolo Fortiche, and to our municipal mayor, Mayor Roelio Enquinyo, for their information and appropriate action. Mr. Chair, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed ordinance number 2025-... I move for the approval of this proposed ordinance number 2025 dash zero nine zero B dash P.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution urging all barangay local government units of Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon to establish barangay economic enterprises to generate revenue and provide essential services to their constituents. Any second? Any comments? Honorable, the motion is approved.
For transferred item one D, a proposed resolution number 2025 dash zero nine one B dash P. A resolution earnestly requesting the Honorable Roelio Neil Piruque, Provincial Governor of Bukidnon, to allocate two sets of tents for the use of the Philippine National Police in Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. Uttered by yours truly. Uh, whereas in the pursuit of effective local governance in Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, and pursuant to the seal of good local governance, an assessment was made to areas that needs meaningful and lasting reforms. Whereas the Manolo Fortiche police station have been facing challenges due to lack of adequate temporary shelter solutions during emergencies and community events. Whereas the provision of tents is crucial in ensuring that the PNP can respond effectively to unforeseen circumstances and can host important gatherings, events, and activities in a safe and organized manner. Whereas the allocation of two sets of tents of PNP to PNP Manolo Fortiche will significantly enhance their emergency preparedness and response capabilities while also supporting local events and activities that promote community engagement. Whereas the tents shall be securely maintained by the designated PNP official and shall be used exclusively for official purposes and public service. Now therefore, be it resolved as it is hereby, uh, resolved, a resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Roelio Neil Piruque, Provincial Governor of Bukidnon, to allocate two sets of tents intended for use by PNP Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. Resolve further that a copies of this resolution be furnished to the Provincial Governor, Roelio Neil Piruque, for his information and appropriate action. Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this proposed resolution number 2025 dash zero nine one B dash P.
There's a motion for the approval of the proposed resolution earnestly requesting Honorable Roelio Neil Piruque, the Provincial Governor of Bukidnon, to allocate two sets of tents intended for use by the PNP Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. Any second? Any comments? Honorable, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Quinho.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item one E, I move to recognize our committee chair on laws, rules, and regulation, Honorable Kristi Salabi.
Honorable Salabi.
For item one E, it is a resolution number 2025 dash zero three zero of barangay Alae entitled, "A Resolution Requesting the Honorable Roelio Quinho and the Municipality of, uh, the Municipal Mayor to Release the Municipal Aid to barangay Alae in the Amount of One Million Pesos Intended for the Lot Purchase of barangay Alae, Manolo Fortiche." So we have here the attached resolution coming from the barangay, Mr. Presiding Officer, that the purpose of this is for the land purchase and they will be using the land for the MRF and SK building. So with this, I move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the resolution number 2025 dash zero three zero barangay Alae, uh, requesting the Honorable Mayor to release the municipal aid to barangay Alae in the amount of one million pesos intended for the lot purchase of barangay Alae. Lot purchase in barangay Alae, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon. Any second? Any comments? Honorable, the motion is approved. Okay, proceed to one H.
Uh, for item one H, it is a letter, uh, from, signed by the municipal mayor requesting authority to enter into a memorandum of agreement with PH Global Jet Express Incorporated for the provision of courier delivery services to MLGU. So in the attached document, Mr. Presiding Officer, we have here the memorandum of agreement uh, for the LGU Manolo Fortiche represented by our mayor and for the PH Global Jet Express Incorporated will be represented by their marketing manager, Ramphiel Tondag. So as per checking, Mr. Presiding Officer, uh, everything is in order however, uh, as requested by the minority floor leader that, uh, in the attached document, there should be a, a letter coming from the back office, um, justifying that a special services and small amount does not require bidding. So with this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with PH Global Jet Express Incorporated for the provision of a courier or delivery services to LGU Manolo Fortiche. Any second? Any comments? So, do we require now or?
Uh, for this, uh, MOA, Mr. Chair, uh, spur, um, discussed with the minority floor leader that in the, especially with the purchases, there should be a, since it is a small amount, there shouldn't be a bidding however, he, the majority, minority floor leader wanted to attach that document as part of the attachment of the...
So are we approving this pending on the?
Yes, yes, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Okay, so we will, uh, request the, we will approve this pending on the provision or the compliance of the request to attach the justification from the back of, back office with regards to this small purchase activity. Any further comments? So there being no more comments, the motion is now approved.
For item one I, Mr. Presiding Officer, I think it will be the ma- Honorable...
No, before the one I, we go back to one F and G.
F, one F and one G. And with that...
It's not for, um, I think...
Yeah, and, and with that, I move, uh, to recognize our committee chair on, uh, finance and budget appropriations, Honorable Rina Quinho.
Honorable Quinho.
For transferred item one F is from the office of the municipal mayor, dated July eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Is a request for realignment of fund amounting to fifty-five thousand pesos from various portions of appropriations to be made available as an additional appropriations of various variances of the said office and programs. Attached herein is a certification that the amount of fifty-five thousand pesos is available for realignment from the general fund of the municipal civil registers office. Their traveling expenses worth twenty thousand pesos is to be appropriated for their training expenses with the same amount and for non-office tourism month celebration, maintenance, and other operating expenses. Other MOE amounting to thirty-five thousand pesos to be appropriated for, uh, their prices. Still, the amount is thirty-five thousand pesos. So, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this realignment of fund.
So there's a motion for the approval of realignment of funds amounting to fifty-five thousand pesos from various portions of appropriation as an additional appropriation for various expenses of the said opposite programs. Any second? Any comments? Honorable, the motion is approved.
For transferred item one G, this is from the municipal budget office, dated July eighteen, twenty twenty-five. This is a copy of the Sangguniang Kabataan annual budget for the calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay de Lirig, barangay de Hilayan, barangay Santiago. Attached herein is a copy of the technical review analysis sheet of barangay de Lirig for their annual budget for the calendar year twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four, pan eh? Is this correct? Twenty twenty-four, last year pa, no? Twenty twenty-five, di mo ta karoon. Or maybe this is clerical error, I presume. So, the amount is one million five hundred thirty-three thousand and two hundred thirty-four pesos and pesos only. This is the available resources from their ten percent Sangguniang Kabataan share and to be appropriated for their general administration program such as their current operating expenses of personal services, maintenance, and other operating expenses, office supplies, training expenses, traveling expenses, fidelity bond premium. And for their SKU development and empowerment programs, support to LGU sports for all program, annual sports activities, equitable access to education, support to brigada eskwela, capability building, linggo ng kabataan for their municipal linggo ng kabataan, provincial linggo ng kabataan, their environment protection project, traveling expenses, fuel lubricants and expenses for a total of one million five hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred thirty-four pesos. Mr. Presiding Officer, uh, this is the barangay de Lirig annual budget calendar year twenty twenty-five. And also for the barangay Santiago, their technical review analysis sheet for the calendar year twenty twenty-five. The total amount of the available resources of the Sangguniang Kabataan share of ten percent is amounting to one million two hundred two, uh, two hundred twenty-one thousand and three hundred sixteen pesos and ninety centavos to be appropriated for their general administration program, their current operating expenses and maintenance and other operating expenses. For the total general administration program is six hundred thousand eight hundred sixteen and nineteen, ninety centavos to be, uh, deducted to their uh, SKU development empowerment programs like, uh, equitable access to quality education, environmental protection, health and anti-drug abuse, sports development program for their active citizenship, their capability building, um, what is it, zonal cultural dance? KKK. Prices with supplies, expenses, and other supplies and materials. So the total SKU development and empowerment programs, total expenditure programs is one million two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred sixteen and ninety centavos. For barangay, for the Sangguniang Kabataan annual budget calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay de Hilayan, attached here is their technical review analysis sheet. Uh, the available resources from, coming from their ten percent Sangguniang Kabataan share is amounting to four hundred ninety-eight thousand and one hundred ninety-seven pesos and fifty centavos to be appropriated for their current operating expenses, general administration program, their SKU development power and programs, uh, environmental protection like cleanup drive, climate change adaptation, disaster risk reduction and resiliency, health and anti-drug abuse, sup- uh, sports development, barangay linggo ng kabataan, municipal linggo ng kabataan, support to aro activity, municipal sports for all Olympic, sports equipment, and for their capability building, lakbay aro program. For the total expenditure, expenditure program of four hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-seven pes- uh, ninety-seven and fifty centavos. Um, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of the Sangguniang Kabataan annual budget for the calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangay de Lirig, barangay de Hilayan, barangay Santiago.
There's a motion for the approval of the SK annual budget for calendar year twenty twenty-five of barangays de Lirig, de Hilayan, and Santiago. Any second? Any comments? Honorable, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Quinho.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item one I, I move to recognize Honorable Miguel Di Mata, the committee chair of, uh, Civil Service.
Honorable Di Mata.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Transferred item one I is a letter from the municipal mayor requesting for a passage of a resolution the concurrence of the appointment of Attorney Risi Hamila to position of municipal government department head one, legal officer, and, uh, engineer Joey Cesar Gaid to position of municipal government, municipal government department head one under the administrator's office. And, uh, attached to this, Mr. Chair, is the appointment of Ms. of Attorney Risi Hamila and Joey Cesar Gaid, signed by the municipal mayor. And since this request is, uh, urgent, Mr. Chair, I move for the pa- passage of a resolution concurring the appointment of, uh, Attorney J, Attorney Risi Hamila and, uh, engineer, uh, Joey Gaid. I so move for its approval, Mr. Chair.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the municipal mayor for the concurrence of the appointment of department head positions of Attorney Risi Hamila as municipal government department head one and Gioa Cesar M. Gaid as, um, municipal government department head one. Any second?
Second.
Any comments?
Comment.
Honorable Alberesi.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I, I just want to raise a, uh, a long-held tradition, Mr. Chair, of the Sangguniang Bayan, which is to require the personal appearance.
Yes.
Uh, but we can't require them next, uh, to, to appear next session, Mr. Chair. Just to, uh, preserve the, uh, long-held tradition of, of the Sangguniang Bayan, Mr. Chair.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Honorable Alberesi, any further comments? So hearing no more, so the motion is now approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
We'll just, uh, invite the two department heads on next session. Thank you, Honorable Di Mata.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item, uh, number one J, I move to recognize the committee chair on health, sanitation, and nutrition, Honorable Joy Cordovest.
Honorable Cordovest.
Thank you, Madam Abales. Uh, for item number five of the communication transferred as business of the day, item one J, as in joy. Uh, this is a request, uh, for the Sangguniang Bayan, your honor, to authorizing, a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Manolo Fortiche, on the implementation of the Field Health Consulta package. So I have here, your honor, the, uh, MOA memorandum of agreement that the municipal health office of Manolo Fortiche, acting as the Bukidnon, Manolo Fortiche Consulta provider, seeks to formalize a partnership with the Bukidnon... seeks to formalize a partnership with the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Manolo Fortiche, referred to as the referral facility, to strengthen the referral system for services not available at the RHU level under the Field Health Consulta Package. This MOA is endorsed by the Municipal Health Officer and respectfully referred to the Sangguniang Bayan Municipal Mayor, Roelio N. Kinio, for the passage of the resolution authorizing him to enter into a said memorandum of agreement. The purpose of this memorandum of agreement is to ensure access to necessary diagnostic and ancillary services not, not available at the RHU in support to Field Health Consulta beneficiaries. Mga kuwanisya, Your Honor. Medical services, diagnostic and procedures under the Consulta Package cannot be delivered by the LSU due to the implement limitations in diagnostic and imaging tests. And then, uh, also to enhance the implementation of the universal healthcare in the municipality. The scope of services by the referral facility, the following diagnostic procedures should be rendered to referred patients. Uh, diagnostic examination such as the complete CBC and a complete blood count with platelet uh, count, then lipid profile, fasting blood sugar, oral glucose tolerance test, HBAIC, creatinine, chest X-rays, putum microscopy, ECG urinalysis, fecalysis and ultrasound. Attached also here, Your Honor, is the corresponding prices. The payment of the referred diagnostic services shall be charged against the Consulta Fund of the accredited Bukidnon Manolo Fortiche Consulta Provider. It shall be the responsibility of the LGU concerned to enact the referral and payment system required therefore. And no out-of-pocket expenses shall be incurred by eligible Consulta members, Your Honor. So the agreement outlines, I mean, this, the signatories of this agreement are Honorable Roelio Orquino, Municipal Mayor, and the Honorable Roelio Roque, the Provincial Governor, and signed by the presence of Joan Marie V. Duñas, Municipal Health Officer, and Gina G. Faktura M.D., the Chief of Hospital. Um, given the benefit of the constituents and the enhancement of Consulta Package implementation, I respectfully endorse the approval of the resolution authorizing the Municipal Mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement with the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Manolo Fortiche, Your Honor, Mister Presiding Officer. So I move, Your Honor, for the approval of the request of our Municipal Mayor.
There's a motion for the approval of the request of the Municipal Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Bukidnon Provincial Hospital, Manolo Fortiche on the implementation of the Field Health Consulta Package. Any second? Any comments? Is this different from E. Consulta?
This is the E. Consulta, Your Honor.
Amor na siya? Okay? Any comments? The motions approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Cordovest.
Mister Presiding Officer, for the transferred item 1K, I move to recognize our Committee Chair on Education, Honorable Kristi Salabe.
Honorable Salabe?
For item 1K, it is a letter signed by the Municipal Mayor requesting authority to enter into a memorandum of agreement to way the Central Mindanao University for an own job training program. So in the attached document, Mister Presiding Officer, uh, is a MOA. Uh, for the CMU, it will be represented by, for the Central Mindanao University, it will be represented by the President Dr. Rolito G. Ibalier. And for the LGU, as the host training establishment, will be represented by our local Chief Executive. As per checking on the MOA memorandum of agreement document, Mister Presiding Officer, um, everything is in order. However, uh, before we approve this MOA, I would like to recommend the following, Mister Presiding Officer, that the MOA should include the number of students and hours to be rendered during their OGT. And second, uh, in the duration, it should be uh, indicated the duration of the contract, Mister Presiding Officer. So with this, I move for its approval.
So there's a motion for the approval of the proposed, of the request of the Municipal Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Central Mindanao University for on-the-job training program. Any second? Any comments?
Mister Chair, the, the, the one that I mentioned should be indicated the number of students and the number of uh, hours to be rendered by the OGT and also the duration of this agreement, Mister Presiding Officer. It's not here in the MOA.
So we will not approve it?
We will approve it, but they have to, uh, put it in the MOA when they sign this document, Mister Chair.
Can we just let them edit first before we approve? Or we will approve pending on your request?
Actually, Mister Chair, basically either, either ways, Mister Presiding Officer, uh, those are just recommendation because in a spur discussed with the minority floor leader, it should be in the MOA, every, all the details.
Yes, if it's a requirement, so we should not approve it because it's not stipulated in the MOA.
Um, yes, Mister Presiding Officer, I, I agree. But i- if this MOA is needed for the students, then we could approve and then following all the recommendations. But, uh, if the body will agree that this will be, they will just ask the Executive Office to edit first and approve it after they edit the MOA. It's okay with me, Mister Presiding Officer.
Honorable Pinaso?
Actually, uh, those are mga student nga, kung sila. Uh, di, i, i butang gina dito. I butang gina dito before signing. Pero this, this one is already been subject for approval in our end, no? Before the signing between the student. Which I believe nga, blangkran siya diha. But before mag-signing, butang gina juris- jurison of every individual. Of course, asang, uh, ogam pizza, no? Butang na niya. But, uh, before, before sa signing, it should be approved by our, of the August body.
So what are you suggesting, Honorable Pinaso?
My suggestion is be approved in our end.
Okay. Any, any further comments from the other members? Honorable Pinaso?
Uh, Your Honor, uh, uh, my daughter has just completed the, uh, training, uh, OGT and the Provincial Engineering Office, but they are not allowed until they have the, uh, complete hours suggested. Wala sila gi-approve o mawginakadugay sa ila. So maybe we could do also here in our municipality so that we can know the, uh, time, the limits and how many student.
So are you suggesting, Honorable Pinaso, that we will not, we will not yet approve the, the MOA unless the...
Yes, Your Honor.
Those specifics are being incorporated?
Yes, Your Honor, kay grabi ka-strik sila when it comes to their OGT. So balik-balik kid sila ano, dapat guy dato indicate first. All the, all the, uh, things necessary kay strikto kid sila.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Pinaso. Anymore? Honorable Pinaso?
Sure, Mister Chair. But you know, uh, beforehand, munang mangayo ang local Chief Executive for approval. Kay si- siyempre ang Chief Executive siyamay mo kuwan dito sa unse kinanglanon. But all those kuwan kibali nga kinanglan, ilas na nagbutang dito before we design the number of hours, asang ah squilahan or everything, no? So sato pa, delay sila makanta- transact without our approval. That's, that's my observation, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Pinaso. So...
Yes, Mister Chair.
Honorable Albarisi?
Um, uh, may take, Mister Chair, I, uh, I am also, I share the concern of Honorable Pinaso akinang langit sa i-indicate and, uh, but however, I am also concerned basinunya ma-delatarning deployment sa mga estudyante. So, um, uh, unta, I want to object, pero I'm now inclined to support the motion nga i-approve na lang siya. Anyway, we're just authorizing the mayor, but with ikulatilia or recommendation nga, it should be, uh, stated in their contract. Uh, yes, in the contract and in this memorandum of agreement, uh, I'm referring to the mem- the jurison of the, uh, the training, Mister Chair, or of this memorandum of agreement. So iclarify lang in their, uh, contract para ma-accommodating concerning Councilor Pinaso and the other members of the Sangguniang Bayan. So I, uh, support the motion that this be approved subject to the recommendation that it be specified in the contract, Mister Chair, that the duration of the, uh, training be specified in the contract. Uh, anyway, Mister Chair, the request is just for the, for us to authorize the mayor to enter into the, uh, contract with, uh, CMU. So we will be granting him the authority, Mister Chair, uh, or to enter into a memorandum of agreement. And, uh, in fact, we, we have given a good, uh, restriction, Mister Chair, a restriction or rather a, a condition for the mayor to, uh, to, for him to sign the contract and the, the condition is for, uh, the contract to specify the duration, which is a good exercise of legislative oversight, Mister Chair.
No, what's the pleasure of the Honorable Albarisi?
Uh, I support the motion, Mister Chair, of the Honorable, uh, Liparto Salabe.
How about Honorable Pinaso?
Uh, if it is urgent, maybe we can approve now.
Okay. So, the motion of the Honorable, uh, Liparto is to approve pending on the provision of the number of students, the number of hours and the duration of the contract? Okay?
Recommendation?
Mister Presiding Officer.
Okay, so... We will just have that, uh, as a recommendation, no? To incorporate these items. So, any further comments? So being there are no more comments, the motion of the Honorable Liparto is now approved.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Mister Presiding Officer, for the transferred item, uh, 1L, I move to recognize, uh, Honorable Elsie Verdergunlay, the Committee Chair on Farmers.
Honorable Verdergunlay?
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Before kay nangita pasila sa katung, hilang papilis, I take this opportunity to announce, uh, this morning we received another project from Region 10 headed by Executive Director Apolo Pakamalan. A project of a turnover to us, the storage building located at Poroxinko, Barangay Lingyon and handed down to, with our Executive Mayor to, uh, Blis Lingyon Multipurpose Cooperative. The 180 square meter, uh, storage building and 1,000, uh, 200 square meter, uh, uh, dry pavement with, uh, covered with transparent, uh, plastic transparent to protect from rainfall. This is a project for, uh, climate change, Mister Presiding Officer. This is worth 1, uh, 1.6 million, Mister Presiding Officer. So this, uh, morning, uh, endorsing the Sangguniang Bayan, a copy attached of the tri-pipe tight memorandum of agreement by the, between Department of Agriculture, Regional Field Office, Region 10, Antonio Luna State Kagayan di Uro City, represented by its Regional Executive Director, Josie Apolo Y. Pakamalan, referred to us, uh, the RFO Region 10 and the Local Government Unit of Manolo Fortiche, represented by our Mayor Roelio N. Kinio, referred to as MLGU and the Montibugao Agrarian Reform Beneficiaries Farmers Cooperative, uh, represented, represented by President, Chairperson, Binhamin G. Magtas Jr., referred as proponent on this project component one, uh, unit four-wheel drive farm tractor to the Montibugao Agrarian Reform Beneficiaries Farmers Cooperative, Montibugao, Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, in the amount of 2,900,000 pesos. Relative to this, this undersign is respectfully requesting the August body to authorize the undersign to enter into the said MOA, anticipating with thanks for your consideration and urgent appropriate action on this matter. So, Mister Presiding Officer, this is a beneficiary to the farmers of Montibugao, not only for the Montibugao, but for the whole Manolo Fortiche, Bukidnon, Bukidnon, Mister Chair. So, uh, I move for the approval for this, uh, memorandum of agreement, Mister Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the Municipal Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture, Regional Field Office 10 on the project component of one four-wheel drive farm tractor to the Montibugao Agrarian Reform Beneficiaries Farmers Cooperative amounting to 2.9 million pesos. Any second? Any comments? The motions approved.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Verdergunlay.
Mister Presiding Officer, for the transferred item, uh, 1M, I move to recognize Honorable Rena Kinio, our Committee Chair on Finance, Budget and Appropriation.
Honorable Kinio?
For transferred item 1M, this is from the Municipal Health Office, dated July 16, 2025. This is a letter request, uh, in line with the implementation of the Field Health Consulta Package under the Universal Healthcare Program. The Bukidnon Manolo Fortiche Consulta Provider has been actively providing primary care services to our constituents. As part of the claims reimbursement process, Field Health requires the designation of valid and authorized bank accounts where Consulta claims shall be deposited. In this regard, they respectfully request an endorsement to the Sangguniang Bayan to pass a resolution authorizing the use of our existing land bank accounts for all checks of the Bukidnon Manolo Fortiche Consulta Provider to be deposited in the following accounts. Number one, Land Bank PCB1, uh, Healthcare Institute, Institution Share, uh, account number 3532-dash-zero.
uh, account number 3532-0046-90. And Land Bank PCB for the professional fee sharing, uh, sharing, share, the account number is 3532-0039-45. And these accounts are already enrolled with field health for other benefit packages, and we seek to include their use of consulta package claims to ensure seamless and efficient fund disbursement. And attached... attached herein is also a certification that the foregoing information are true and correct, attested by our, uh, municipal health officer, uh, John Marie V. Duenez, MD. And this is a notice, no, of auto credit payment scheme of our, uh, field health provider. Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, I move for the approval of this request to pass a resolution authorizing the use of our existing land bank accounts for all checks of the Bukidnon Manolo Forte's Consulta Provider to be deposited on our, um, existing banks, land bank accounts.
There's a motion for the approval of the request to pass a resolution authorizing the use of existing land bank accounts for all checks of the Bukidnon Manolo Forte's Consulta Provider to be deposited in the Land Bank PCB1 and Land Bank PCBPF. Any second?
Second, Your Honor.
Any comments? I think for the healthcare institution share, we can use for the e-consult... for the consulta package, but the professional fee share, I think this will have a confusion sa distribution of the... the share.
Uh, Your Honor?
Honorable Cordobes?
The municipal health office, they are now under process, Your Honor, to identify the share of the doctors, the, um...
But the checks is it, uh, separate, the... the professional fee and the other?
I think just one check, Your Honor.
Lagi sa'yo na.
Uh, separate na siya, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, because, uh, it has a separate account. So it's stated that...
Yes, but the check that will be issued to us will not be on a separate checks or one check only?
Separate na siya, Mr. Chair. Okay, for the record, ma-account siya properly.
Meaning, ang e-consulta, uh, the consulta package, that's our share, will be two checks?
Yeah, for the healthcare and the professional fee sharing.
Lagi, pero ang share, gikan sa field health, is share for the LGU, two... two checks?
Two checks.
Yes.
For the... for the healthcare institution and for the professional fee.
Yes, may I add also, Mr. Chair, nga, gilahig na gina... Mr. Chair, kay, na kay mga coa findings, ano? Kanyan'to.
Ka-pang-share?
Yes, di gina-pidi usahon, and gi-traspan gyan siya separately. Lahigyan ang sa... separate ang healthcare institution, kay lahi ang, uh, ang pag-appropriate, ano? Lahipod ang sa professional fee sharing kay, dito gina-painon sa doctors, nurses, and katong health professionals. Na-isyo kanyan'to sa mga coa findings, nga kaning health institution share, maki pa kani'na. Kanyan'to gyan sa general fund, and subject to kuwan pa, AIP and budget amendment iniksumod.
Ay, sa ma-bahin-bahin?
Yes, kaning adili gyan sa bahin-bahin kay...
Dito na sa AIP lagi i...
Yes, yes, yes. Oh, correct. Well, professional fee sharing, wala gini-labot sa atong AIP and budget. So, dritso sa sa ila based on doctors and nurses and other professionals nga naasa kuwan.
So meaning, the... the checks that will be issued will be very specific?
Yes, Mr. Chair, is gilahig na gyan siya. And even the account na nagidai kuwan o HCI or PF. Mas saktong na siya, Mr. Chair.
Lagi, pero ang kanimanong, uh, HCI na'to, it's not solely for field health?
Hmm.
No? We will just be using it, kay existing man siya.
Existing siya, yes, Your Honor.
For field health. Pero this was created, or this was open, this account was open, not for field health alone.
Not for all, existing account already.
Hmm. Okay, saktong?
Yes, Your Honor.
Hmm, yung ina. Okay. Any further comments? So, there being no more comments, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Kinyo.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item 1N, I move to recognize Honorable Elsiver Dagunlay for this purpose.
Honorable Dagunlay.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. This is, uh, endorsement coming from the Manolo Forte's Roads and Traffic Administration. Uh, endorsed is the Tri-Cab Operator's Applican, who has been inspected by the Manolo Forte's Roads and Traffic Administration and is qualified to operate and fly within Manolo Forte's Bukidnon, Mr. Presiding Officer. So the operators are the following. From, uh, Zone 4, Declan Manolo Forte, this is a new, uh, association, Mr. Presiding Officer. Uh, Jose Z. Jaime, uh, Baha Green, MB file, 0700000, kadagang ganyan zero, kasali to the, uh, member sa una. Number 2, Renato I. Unahon from Zone 5, Lingion Manolo Forte's Bukidnon. Number 3, Francisca B. Bushu, from Porok Gis, De Milag, Manolo Forte's Bukidnon. And last, Pablo Verano, from, uh, Zone 4, Declan Manolo Forte's Bukid... Bukidnon. So this is, uh, endorsed by our MFRTA and inspected by our staff. So I move for the approval for this following, uh, operators of Tri-Cab within our municipality, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the new applications for Tri-Cab operation for Jose Jaime, Renato Unahon, Francisca Bushu, and Pablo Verano. Any second? Any comments? Under ringnan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Dagunlay.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item 1O, I move to recognize Honorable, uh, Kristi Salabi, our committee chair on cooperative.
Honorable Liparto?
For item 1O, Mr. Presiding Officer, it is a request for... It is a accreditation application of the Manolo Forte's Transport Service Cooperative, or MAPFORTRANSCO. So based on the submitted documents, Mr. Chair, everything is in order and is... it is complete. So I move for its approval, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the acc-accreditation application of Manolo Forte's Transport Service Cooperative, or MAPFORTRANSCO. Any second? Any comments? Under ringnan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Liparto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the transferred item 1P, I move to recognize Honorable Alex Payanga, our committee chair on games and amusement.
Honorable Payanga?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is relative to the letter request coming from Grand Manolo Forte's Arena Incorporated. A request for... uh, special hack fight, Mr. Chairman. Uh, detailed, August 2 is hack fight, August 8 derby, August 9 hack fight, August 14 is derby, August 16 hack fight, August 23 hack fight, and August 30 hack fight, Mr. Chair. With this, uh, letter request, Mr. Chairman, the seed, uh, event is within our ordinance, Mr. Chair. So with this, I move for the approval of the letter request for the schedule of event of Grand Manolo Forte's Arena, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Presiding Officer.
So there's a motion for the approval of the request of the Grand Manolo Forte's Arena for the event scheduled for month of August 2025. Any second? Any comments? Under ringnan, the motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Honorable Payanga.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for, uh, transferred items finished, uh, let's go on the announcements. The Neo Plus attendance on August 6 to 7, 2025.
So, uh, this is mandatory, everyone should be going. Uh, but the confirmation on who's going to sleep, not during, but after. Kise bag, sleep, during. Okay na? So, kise na confirm, mag... mag-sleep? Cordobes only? Cordobes, Abalis? Luwara? Okay? Announcement, uh, naibangang pending ordinances, nasan 'yung table, no? So if you would want to file that again, it's up to you. Then, uh... Manam, maniba? Turnover of storage building? Okay, any more announcements?
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn the regular session.
So there's a motion for the adjournment of our regular session. Any second?
A second.
Any objections? Under ringnan, the motion is now approved. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.